Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, December twenty first, two thousand and fifteen, our city council work session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we're got a couple of things that we're going to talk about tonight. And first one is Glenn, thank you very much for the snacks.
I take no credit for it.
So if you're gonna chew and talk at the same time, shut your mic off. No. So anyhow. So yeah, let's get started on this thing, Shane. We're gonna talk about the Bridge Improvement Grant for the design of the Third Avenue Northwest Bridge. Kind of is very timely after we just had Clark Engineering here talking about this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, we put a couple of graphics together to kind of help, and we'll probably distribute these to the council through email or something like that, just for further information. But this is a little information box that we created for each of the bridges that are on our report system. And these, you can see that we have three of them that are different colors. The green ones are the acceptable ratings, and this red one indicates the worst-case bridge, which we already identified, is that one that was on South Broadway, the further south towards the truck bypass. The other one is our third-to-last deficient bridge, and that's the one that's on the north end of Broadway, that would be by Hesco and the gas station. So the one that we want to talk about tonight, though, is this one over here on Third Avenue, and its bridge rating is currently thirty-six point seven, which makes it our second lowest-rated bridge in our system. So with that, we also, I'll just show you another graphic that I'll share with you guys. This, we also put together our staff, kind of indicating each of these bridges, they have their bridge number here on the far left, their location name in the middle wide column, the year that they were built, or estimated when they were built, if we don't know the exact records. And then if you scroll across this document, oh wait, I don't know what's going on here. I'm just trying to think. But two thousand and fifteen was our current bridge report that we received from Clark. Two thousand and fourteen was the Austin one. And then, so we just alternating years, and you can see how these bridge ratings have changed from year to year. So the one bridge on the top here was rated at seventy-seven point two in two thousand and thirteen. It's currently been dropped to a sixty-five point seven in two thousand and fifteen. So we're gonna use this as a tool to kind of input the basic data on the status of the bridges as we go forward, as these reports keep coming to us, and use it as a tool to kind of give you guidance on how to fund projects and needs that we see with these bridges.
I got a question for you on that.
Yep.
The Kemp Avenue Bridge there, how can it go up for the rating over yours? Wouldn't that naturally go?
Most likely, that's because a different company did the rating. So Austin did this eighty-nine point four rating, and you can see that's consistent from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen. Slightly different person, well, different people evaluated it and came up with a slightly different result, so that's what that increase would indicate. So still in the same range, you know, right up there as one of our better bridges. So anyway, so that's a good example. Here's, you know, of course, the location of the bridge on our aerial map. So what we're asking for you to do now, or tonight, at council, if you so choose, is we're using the numbers that Clark Engineering provided to us in our bridge report for two thousand and fifteen. They have a total replacement budget of one point one million roughly, and of that, a hundred and nine thousand is what the cost to do the hydraulic analysis and design would be for Clark, or presumably for whoever we would hire. The bridge would be in that same range. But they did change the bridge program this year. They discontinued the way they used to do bridge funding. And so our original plan was to replace the Third Avenue Bridge, and I think it was on the schedule to be replaced in the year two thousand and twenty. And we're still anticipating trying to replace that bridge by that date. But because of the change in the bridge funding, this now changes how we approach requesting grants and monies to help pay for the bridge. So what they've come up with is a Bridge Improvement Grant that's managed through the South Dakota DOT. And at this time, we're asking for a grant that would help cover at least eighty percent of our, or a minimum of eighty percent of our engineer's estimate of a hundred and nine thousand for the design aspect. Now, all of these projects are rated on a point system, and currently, we've just kind of penciled out some numbers where we think we would land within that pointing system. And we would rank on a scale of one hundred about a forty-two point eight. Now, the reason that seems so low is because the point system was really designed to encompass all bridges in the state, so that would be everything from a township bridge, you know, to the interstate bridges. So we fall about where you would expect, you know, about halfway in between, because we're not a box culvert and we're not an interstate overpass or something larger, you know, where we're crossing the Missouri River or something. Those would be the highest-rated projects. But anyway, long story.
You mean in priority?
Yes. The higher priority bridges, say, for instance, if the bridge at Olauma Chamberlain needed to be replaced, because of its location and how far you would have to travel out of the way to get to the other side, would rank closer to one hundred based on certain criteria than, say, us, because we only have to go, you know, a couple of blocks away to cross the big Sioux River. So, you know, those are all rated within that system. That's why I say it's quite a broad range of bridges that are evaluated in this system. But we would rank about as high as any city, or we anticipate we would rank about as high as any other city that would be requesting. So there is one way to buy more points, and that is for every, let's see. I can't remember what the exact number is, but it was in our memo that's in our council packet. You can buy points, up to eighteen points, by increasing our share. Our share right now would be twenty percent. If we would increase that to fifty percent, as an example, we could gain another eighteen points on our pointing system, which would take us from a forty-two to a sixty. So then we'd be ranking pretty high, especially on city projects.
So these are the new funds, aren't they?
Correct.
That are out there.
Yep.
What do you think, really, in all reality, your chances of getting them within the next two, three, four years would be?
Well, our first goal, of course, is to get the engineering funding secured. And then, once we have a bridge that may be sitting on a shelf, ready to construct, and then if there's a similar infusion in infrastructure funding, sometimes those projects that are ready to be built immediately receive higher merits and can receive funding on a much accelerated pace. So I would say that we definitely want to get this grant applied for and get the bridge designed and on a shelf, then we can budget accordingly. And, you know, then you have the liberty of spreading our budgeting process over a four- or five-year period in lieu of not getting other funds maybe from the state. But I think it also sets us up very well to point well and get other grant funds through the state system.
Shane, I want to make sure I understand how this process works. So you're saying that, let's say, we had the same rating as a bridge in Brookings, for example, so by paying more of these costs upfront, we're in fact bidding against Brookings for priority on this bridge? Is that what we're?
Yes, you can gain points within the system by voluntarily paying a higher percentage than you're required to. So we, the minimum we're required to participate in is twenty percent. But if you commit to more than that, you gain, I think it's three points for every five percent, or something like that. So you, it's a similar program to that. But yeah, it's, and then the other thing that's a big advantage is if you do have a bridge designed and on a shelf, and like I said, an infusion of funding becomes available, or say, a project that ranked higher than Watertown, maybe not have their bridge plans ready, and so they're gonna drop out of a certain year, and we might get to plug our bridge in and get ours done sooner than them, even though they pointed higher than us. So it is important to get in the system early and be ready to go when the funding comes. So.
Well, thanks, Shane. I think that tells a lot about what you're gonna be asking for this evening, about applying for that grant, and I think that we would probably more than likely want to get moving on that.
Right.
So what I'm gonna do is, I think that if there'll be any other questions this evening, they can ask you that, but I don't think there probably will be. It's pretty black and white on the process.
Right.
I'm gonna keep you up there, and instead of doing number three on the discussion of snow removal, why don't you just slide right over into the Stoney Point development and kind of give us a heads-up of what's gone on in the last, oh, two, three times that it's been in front of the planning committee?
Well. I don't know why it's.
You're gonna have to close it before you open it.
Close this one, or?
Yep. And you have to reopen them all. It was locked up in that.
All right. So this is our latest and greatest Stoney Point preliminary plan. Jump to a more appropriate page. Oh, come on. There we go. Okay. So at the Planning Commission meeting on December seventeenth, we met and discussed the procedures and weighed in on some of the design criteria that we had received prior to the December seventeenth meeting, but not in time to act on for the November nineteenth meeting at the Planning Commission. So the city staff provided the updated information and review on the water quality storage, and they had met the two-year water quality storage criteria of our ordinances, but did not include capture of the one-hundred-year rain event detention that was also required by ordinance. So what that means is they take this drainage plan, and it's subdivided into four or five pieces, depending on where the water runs, and then it analyzes where the collection of the water would be. There's a water quality feature at this location, there's another one here, there's one down on the south edge, and then one down here at the low point where the road would have crossed between the pond and the wetlands. So that was the proposed locations of the water quality features, but not, again, did not include detention of the hundred-year event. So anyway, that was weighed in on quite extensively over the last month, month and a half, in discussions. We did have discussions with the Corps of Engineers. They were waiting for a new plan submitted to go forward with the permit that would have been required to construct the channel. Those final plans wouldn't have been done until acceptance of the plat that was before the Planning Commission. The DNR would not have stopped the project either. However, they would have required that the city follow through with the project and follow the ordinance, which would include the hundred-year detention storm. Then the game fish in parks really hadn't responded at the time of the meeting, but we would anticipate that they would have reacted upon approval of the plat, but hadn't heard in the meantime. So with that, the Planning Commission weighed in on all the information that was provided to them, and ultimately, that they recommended that the plat not be approved. And then what that means is either that plat will be brought forward to the city council, most likely at the January four meeting, for you to ratify their denial of the plat, or I guess you could override it and approve the plat, but that's not what's gonna come to you as a recommendation. And further, or the developer can rescind his request for the plat action in that, before that timeframe as well. So I will be visiting with the developer to find out what his desire is, if he wants to rescind his request for the plat approval, or if he wants to have it come forward and be acted upon by the council. And either way, I would anticipate some revised version of a development plan may come forward from the developer for this site, so with that, I guess.
Shane, can you explain? I know I had said it wrong a couple of times. I kept saying a hundred-year flood event. Maybe you could just make sure we understand, to get on the right page on that.
Okay, yep. Very good. That gets, those terms get interchanged a lot in conversation, and the difference between a hundred-year flood event and a hundred-year rain event is, just because you have a hundred-year rain event, does not automatically mean that you're gonna have flooding. It just means that the rate of rain has fallen that meets that intensity criteria. So I don't remember what the exact numbers are for Watertown. I haven't been here long enough to have them memorized, but I believe it's a five-inch-plus-an-hour rainy, rain rate to meet the hundred-year flood event. Now, you know, and the reason they're different is because usually it takes a sustained amount of time to create flooding conditions. You could have a hundred-year rain event that lasts for less than fifteen minutes, but if it fell fast enough, hard enough, it can trigger the rain event criteria without actually producing a flood. So you gotta be careful with what we use for terms, but the hundred-year rain event is in our ordinance for detention requirements, so.
Shane, as we go here, my understanding, the detention issue is completely separate issue from the channel issue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I mean, if you wanted to, they occupy about the same footprint of where maybe some hundred-year rain detention could occur. So in other words, if they didn't build the channel, that might be the most likely place that you would put detention. So they aren't directly connected, but certainly that land could be reutilized for detention if it's not, in fact, constructed as a channel.
But if they chose to do the channel, then they'd have to go to a Plan B to recreate the amount of area needed for the hundred-year rain event?
Correct.
Okay. So they really are independent of each other, as far as they are to us, as far as the issues? They have to meet the hundred-year flood retention?
Correct.
Or rain event retention? How you got me doing this? They have to do that, no matter whether the channel's there or not. And if the channel does get put in, then that's just a whole separate issue in regards to the environmental issue with the lake and such, but we still have to then somehow meet that hundred-year rain event.
Correct.
Shane, have you had a chance to look at it close enough? I mean, how much of a revision are we looking at in the plans now in light of not meeting the hundred-year rain event? I mean, do you have any sense of that?
Well, I can in simple terms. It's gonna require around five acre feet of storage. I know what, kind of what the target is. It just depends on the developer, where he wants to accommodate that storage.
I mean, I guess I'm looking at somewhat of a timeframe, and are we talking about a revision that, you know, within a few weeks, he can come back to us with a revised plan? Are we talking about something that could potentially put the whole project on hold indefinitely, or I guess that's probably more what I'm asking?
Yeah, and that's more a question that should be asked with the developer and his engineering staff than me. I can only speculate. But anyway, one of my thoughts here is that I want my staff and myself will work together with the developer and engineer to make sure that when they come forward next, that all of these controversial and loose-ended items are taken care of to the greatest extent that we can, so that.
So really, Shane, though, if you take a look at that, what you got up there, and if the channel was ditched?
Mm-hmm.
If we don't need the channel, if the channel is not in there, this plat is ready to go. Am I correct?
Well.
By using that as their hundred-year storm event?
You'd want to identify where this area here was gonna get bermed off to, and to what elevation, and then blend the proposed grading plan into that area is what they would need to provide, so.
And that wouldn't affect the water? I'm sorry, it would not affect the wetlands in there at all, then? Am I correct?
Yeah, the wetlands primarily were gonna be impacted by this drawing. This dashed line here kind of represents where the wetlands are, not exactly, but so really, it was only the end of this channel that was gonna be constructed in the wetlands. The rest of it is all kind of interior lands and could be regraded to suit their needs. But if they chose to, they could revise their grading plan to incorporate the channel area as part of their hundred-year detention.
Is that where you'd have to get to the five acre feet you were talking about?
Right. And basically, you know, if you build a pond that's five feet tall, you only need one acre to accommodate it.
What's he got platted in there right now with the detention ponds? Spaceways, roughly?
I don't know what that comparison is. Well, I do, but I don't have it in front of me.
I'm curious on when they calculate that. Assume nothing's ever done there. Hundred-year rain event, is that property currently then storing all that water?
Well, what you do.
I mean, I understand when the roads go in and stuff, you have impervious part that adds to the situation, but.
Right. So what the concept is, is that you estimate what the rain runoff rate is now undeveloped, and then those hundred-year detention ponds are sized and outlet-sized so that it releases the same runoff rate as today. Let's just throw some non-real numbers at it. Let's say that the runoff rate is ten CFS today, and the developed-out would require, would release a fifty CFS flow. So the pond is designed to hold that forty CFS number, or release the water at the ten CFS rate. So it's really catch the bounce, let it go at the rate that it did before it was developed. That's the concept on these ponds.
Well, when it gets into that, when you start talking about a ten CFS getting released, that isn't clean water, then? That's just going into that pond, and it has to be released with, did you say, within two days? It has to be replaced, so there's really no cleanup to it. You're gonna send a lot of water into the lake dirty.
Usually during the initial rain event, that is true. There is some residual treatment. Because that sits in the pond for up to forty-eight hours, some of the heavier particles that were in that rainwater will settle out and have some secondary benefit to the storage or to the water, overall water quality. But you're right, in the initial event, it's releasing cloudy water into the lake. So.
Which I would assume a lot of the lake does right now.
What was that?
I would assume a lot of the lake does that right now. Wouldn't that be true?
Most likely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all, most of the lake was developed before this concept was adopted by the state of South Dakota. You know, it wasn't initiated at this level, these water quality things, until two thousand and seven, in our city of our size.
Well, it's been entertaining, to say the least, watching those meetings for the last six months. Is there any other questions you have for Shane on this project? This is a project that has come before many, many, many times, and I would say that your process that you're working on right now is probably gonna be looked at very, very well, you know, so that they don't have to come back with a preliminary plan that really is already a final plan, you know, because these folks have put a ton of work into each and every plat that they brought forward to your plan.
Yeah. All of the bases will still be covered. It'll just be covered in a slightly different approach.
Any other questions for Shane on that?
Thanks for the info.
Yeah, thanks for the update on that, Shane. The next one is, if you guys remember, I think it was at the last council meeting, there was some questions about snow removal on Nineteenth Street sidewalks. You know, we just rebuilt that road, and the Department of Transportation did it for us. We used STIP funds on that particular project, and there's a lot of sidewalk put in there that these people have never had before. Some folks have said, since we put the sidewalk in, we should pay for the removal of snow. And I think that Rob wants to step in. Come on up here, Rob. You and Shane can talk about this. The question really begs is, if you folks are wanting to at all look at that, where does it end? You know, and that's kind of the question. So I'm gonna just open this up for discussion. I know some of you have questions about why we'd even consider it. Some of you have suggestions. And Rob, I'm gonna let you just kind of take over at first there and just give the reason where you're at.
Oh, here we go. Yeah, currently, you know, I can understand the burden to the homeowners over there that never had that sidewalk out back, but, you know, it would be, we'd be starting a new precedence that I think would be not good, in my opinion. We'd have a lot of people throughout town that I think would expect us to clean their sidewalks. And in our current ordinance requires the adjacent landowners to clear their sidewalks. You know, ordinance number eighteen oh three eleven talks about snow and ice, owner must remove, and that talks about the snow and ice on the sidewalk. You know, I just think we'd be opening a can of worms by doing that.
Rob, how many people have actually asked for us to do that?
I haven't had any calls personally asking for that.
Steve, do you know? Is it one guy, or what are we looking at?
Yeah, you know, it's very few, you know. I think the problem is, is that there was an accident up there where there was a pedestrian hit walking on the road, and the sidewalks weren't clean. So they're saying, okay, who really needs to get these cleaned up? And that's really where it's come about at.
Have we ever done this before for anybody? Any other places?
No, there, it came to my attention that there might be currently a location where we have been told several years ago to clear a sidewalk, about a hundred-and-fifty-foot stretch of it, for the Human Service Agency, where some of their people go down to Casey's. So I did some research today and dug into that to find out the facts, but that's the only one that I'm aware of currently.
Don't we do it on eighty-one?
The only time we do sidewalks along the highways or any other areas is curbside sidewalks where we pile the snow for storage. Normal boulevards have, you know, a green area where we pile our snow, so we don't affect the sidewalk. But where there is curbside sidewalk, we do go back and clean that, because that's where we're storing.
Most of the sidewalk doesn't have a grass area between, or is the sidewalk on the curb here?
It's, there is areas where there is grass in between on the highways, but we have hodgepodge throughout town.
I'm talking now on Nineteenth on this new part of this.
No, there's grass in between.
It's not consistent all the way through the project. I think typically, there's most, for the most part, it's about five feet between the sidewalk and the curb, but there are a couple of areas where we had to actually move the sidewalk. But there are a couple of areas where we had to actually move the sidewalk closer to the curbs, those might be down to. Three feet or, or so in some areas, but that'd be the very minimum.
I, I don't, and I don't wanna open a can of worms either, but I know that this was a big concern when the project came forward and people were saying, well, we already have a sidewalk. On the front of our property, now you put a sidewalk in the back, and we gotta understand that this is unique to the. You know, where, where else do you have sidewalk, do, do people aren't required to shovel their alley out, so I'm not. Persuaded that we need to take it out of there, but I do understand that it's difficult, and I know somebody said at that last meeting that somebody had to go completely around the block. To get to the, get there to take the snow off, so I don't know what the answer is, but I think at least we need to, to look at this.
But it's be real similar to a corner lot, you got two sidewalks, you know, you're required to clean both of those.
The issue is, and we were, I was at the same meetings that Bill was at, the, the issue isn't really the fact that they have to clean it, it is access. You know, and, and, and there was a lot of concern about that. Cause the people, for example, on the, on the northern part of Nineteenth, on the east side of the road, that stretch there, for example. Where their lot comes back, it's, it's a through lot, and it's not that they bought a double lot. You do have some double lots that are bought up there on the, on the west side up and through there, but as you go farther south. And that's a different scenario than, than what we're dealing with now, but, so for example, in the middle, right across, let's just say from the, the water tower to the east. Down, yep. So now, for example, that person that's, the, one of those individuals that lives there, they've gotta maintain the backside, like they said, is, I don't have any way of getting back there. So for them to go back there, they have to come out the front, load their snow in the front, probably go down the street. Come back around all the way to the back in order to even get back to.
Is there sidewalk on those houses there? On, on Twenty Fifth or Sixth Street or wherever, twenty?
Yeah, this sidewalk right here, this sidewalk right here.
No, I'm not referring to that.
Is.
A city owned, but to the right there, take, take a look over to the east there a little bit. Is there si- no way east, right there, is there sidewalk all along there? I don't see it.
No, there is not. No, there's no sidewalk.
So they're not, they're not pushing any sidewalk there?
No, I guess there is, there, I think there is, it's underneath the, the parcel line.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was their concern is getting back to that.
To that point, my garage is in my alley. I have no way to get to my front sidewalk except for to go around the block, I have to do it every week, it snows.
I would ask the question, when that was developed, what's in the developers agreement, what was agreed to when it was first put together?
Well, at that time, there wouldn't have been sidewalks required, most likely because that was a rural section road.
That, that's been a ditch for a lo- until this process, that was a ditch.
Well, parts of it still are a ditch, but, um, this sidewalk that crosses between Nineteenth and Eighteenth. Is, is one of those rare occasions where the city is maintaining all or part of that as a crossing. Because of the water tower property, um, so these three parcels here, for instance, could come up there, cut across and go down the back. And likewise, if they use that as a cut across north of there, they could shorten their trip a little bit, I suppose.
These didn't have sidewalk, probably wouldn't have had sidewalk except because of the federal state funds were requiring. The project to have sidewalk put in, so this is one of these deals, if we were doing this on our own, we probably wouldn't have insisted on there being sidewalk in there. Well, I don't think it's anything wrong with having the sidewalk there, but.
Very nice to have it, cause there's a lot of folks that walk up and down.
The, the problem we have with this whole thing, some of the properties face Nineteenth, so they need to have sidewalk. And then the sidewalk will go for X blocks and then it, and it was turned into a ditch, but. You know, I'm not a property owner, but I can understand the frustration with, with, they didn't have any say in this, it got done and, you know.
Other than the two properties north of yours, they all face the east and the frontage, right? North, north from your place, north, yep, yep.
But you get south of there across to the west side, and then you'll see where you've got some of that front Nineteenth. And then you've also got quite a number of double lots.
Double lots, yeah.
Yep.
Where their frontage is actually facing.
They're really kinda two issues, but the, the end result of snow removal is the same. And I'm not advocating that we, that we, uh, we remove the snow, I'm just trying to explain what the concern was and the extent of that concern.
Well, and I think part of this we put on our, on ourself in the sense that. Excuse me, developments that were approved in there were not allowed, cause they didn't want all the e- exits and entrances off of Nineteenth. So they were not allowed to make those as blocks, they didn't want all the driveways on the Nineteenth, so they couldn't put fronts there, so that was a backyard. And all of a sudden now, we have to treat it differently because of the sidewalk, but, you know, you can say, well, what was the developer agreement? Well, they weren't allowed to make fronts there, that was, they were told they couldn't do that. Cause they didn't want all that traffic backing out on the Nineteenth, that was a more, am I right with that, Sarah?
You know, I think it'd be nice to be able to do that, Rob, but I, I think what you alluded to earlier was the precedence that we set. And where else we would have to do that, if we do it there, we'd have to do it in a lot of other places, I would imagine.
Guys got, uh, any other questions? I, I, I don't think there's the appetite here right now to, uh, to dive into that. If, if I'm reading it correctly. So, Rob, give us an update on how the, how it went removing the snow this last, uh, last snowfall. We had a couple inches of snow and you used snow gates and.
Yep, actually went, went really well this last, actually both, uh, snow events that we had, uh. The first event, we, uh, cleared all the city streets and alleys, uh, curb to curb in thirty-seven hours, start to finish, so. That was pretty good for an eight inch storm, um, we cleared uptown, I think we did, uh, uptown in. Was it seven hours, I believe, on that first event? Um, had a lot of trucks, we brought in, used both the snow blower and the snow loader and front end wheel loaders to get the snow out, so. That really sped up the process, um, this last round, uh, uh, we were able to use a snow gate and it worked very well. And we should have our second blade and snow gate here mid-January, the way it sounds, so. Should be ready to go and we're gonna, as far as the area town we're looking at, um. We kept the snow gate currently in the same area we did last year and, uh, we have, um. Um, actually, let me see if I can pop this up, I can maybe show you quick here. Oh, it did, okay, um. There's the current one right there.
It's obvious you didn't use the snow gates in my neighborhood.
Sorry.
Bruce, Bruce wanted to know last week when he was gonna get them on his place, so. Didn't you? You, you wonder when you're gonna get.
No, I, I do, this is not a criticism, Rob, I, I just have a question. Thanks a lot, Bill. But I did, I do have a question for you, and I know you're trying to find this, but. I, I, I know that we, we clean streets, uh, uh, my understanding is Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, correct?
Um, yeah, streets is Monday, Wednesday and Friday.
I get them backwards all the time, but, but somebody did mine on the day they were doing avenues.
Right.
And there were, there was a couple of vehicles outside and they went around them and, you know, it's no big deal, I just. But I heard, I've had other people bring it up as well, they were expecting that to happen on, on a different day.
We actually made a, a change due to, uh, the Vo-Tec over there, has a lot of students that park. That whole eastern side of the Vo-Tec from Third Avenue cleared down to Bogue Avenue. We have trouble with cars parking on those avenues and streets over to, what is it, Fourteenth, I believe? Um, and so we don't have so much snow to pick up later, I actually had the guys start picking that up when they do schools. Cause we do, with part of the snow routes, as you'll see, all the red here are snow routes, they go by schools. And by the Vo-Tec, where are we at there? I'm not seeing that, is this Vo-Tec right there? Um, we have a lot of students that park here and there and down these side streets here, so we picked that all up. On the same time we picked up around the whole school, so we don't have, uh, many problems with, you know, cars parked in the way. We actually had an issue with cars that we had a whole bunch of cars and we piled the snow around them by the Vo-Tec. And we had a little problem with that, so fix that.
I'm not on Fifteenth, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on Fifteenth, but I, and I really don't have any Vo-Tec people that park in my neck of the woods. But like I say, there, the snow was li- it was a small amount of snow, but still they just went around those vehicles on the day they weren't supposed to be.
And I'll have to look at that, we do have some areas that, that don't follow suit and never have, and that's like these developments on the outskirts here. That you see in the purple, um, those areas we do do all at one shot. Just due to the fact that a lot of these streets, the way they're laid out, you try to be efficient in how you do these, you know, and the old part of town where it's. Laid out real, you're, it's square, it's simple, you go up, you turn, come back down, up in here, it's more efficient just to finish a whole area in one day. Um, I think if we did start doing those areas the way we do Monday, Wednesday, Friday for streets and avenues on the opposite days. I think it would slow the process down, but these people are used to that, that's the way it's been done. The only change we made, like I say, this last event, we did do that and, and Bruce, I did notice that, uh. Where you're talking where the two cars were, I actually saw that myself, so, but I gotta look at that and see, cause if, if the Vo-Tec students aren't parking. There in that area, let's see, you're talking, uh, it's hard to see on this map.
Hey, Rob, would you ever consider, uh, changing your map and turning it into different zones and, and Monday we'll do Zone One, Tuesday do Zone Two. Or one, two and three, something like that, so that it all, it is all done in one area?
You got continuity, cause you're running that blade from one avenue to the next down the street, you know what I mean?
Right.
That might, that, that sounds like maybe a pretty good idea.
That has been discussed, um, we need to talk about that, uh, in depth. Um, I know, I think it is Sioux Falls does zones, if I remember right. Um, and that's something we could look at, you know, I know with garbage pickup and stuff, we have issues with garbage cans and that type of thing, so. Maybe moving forward, we could look into that and see if we could coordinate things there and be more efficient. We're trying to speed up the process as much as we can and make it as, uh. Yeah, plowing the garbage truck, that's a good idea, I like that.
I think maybe this, this, uh, this winter or spring now, in the spring, you could look at, uh, just bring something and say, well, you know. This might work and let's just kinda look at it and see.
Right, we do, uh, currently, uh, right now with the snow gate, we do work on, from this eighty-one here. Right through this area, um, we do try to pick up all these areas here with the current snow gate. Um, the next snow gate we're getting, we're gonna try to pick up, let's see, I don't know what street we have there, is that First Avenue? And this area right here in the green from First Avenue North is what we're looking to try to hit. But like I say, the first snow, snow event we had, we had eight inches of wet heavy snow, and we did do a little damage to the snow gate, um, trying to move that. It's, it works real well in the lighter, uh, lower snow amounts, uh, amounts. Yeah, six inches of snow, the, we can do generally, um, just depends on how wet and heavy it is, so.
And I think you're finding different gates work differently.
Right, we actually, the, the gate we have coming is a different brand, uh, it's a hanky, um, currently we have a Ryland. Um, from what I understand, Sioux Falls is using, uh, all hinkies, so, and they've had really good luck, they've tried them both, so. Um, we're gonna follow suit there and see how it works, so hopefully we'll have some good luck.
And I, I just wanna touch on that a little bit, just to kinda fill in what I, what I was saying is that I believe that the hanky is set inside the plow ways. So you can literally get closer to the curb than, than if you have the gate out here on the edge of the plow, am I correct?
Right, that's correct.
Because if you have it out here on the edge, your road gets narrower, if you have it inside a ways, then you still keep the, the width of your road.
Right, the, uh, the current snow gate we have does not have any type of protection for the gate, so if you get close to the curb, you damage the gate. And we had an issue twenty minutes into the first run with it, where we damaged the gate, uh, catching a curb. The, the hanky gate is actually inside the end bit, which is the end of the, the mold board. It's inside, so it allows you to use the mold board as a curb rub, so it's more, it protects the gate more. And it allows us to get closer to the curb, instead of being, you know, a foot away or, or more. We can get it within six inches of the curb face.
How many gates are we getting, Rob?
Well, one more coming in January, currently we just have one, so we'll have two after the middle of January.
Is there a plan to get more than that, or?
We do.
You gotta have a grader for them, right?
Right, we do have one other road grader that we could suit up with it.
And what do these things cost again?
Between seven and ten thousand rigged up on, on the machine. So, they're not too bad, but we do have one other machine, we could, uh, look at putting it on. Generally, when you run a snow gate, you, you have to have two blades running consecutively to get the. You always run a blade down the, the driving lane, cause you're trying to get it down to the surface, our plow trucks aren't able. They don't have the down pressure of the weight of the machine, it's just the weight of the plow itself pushing down. Where the road graders have forty thousand pounds of pressure that you can put down on that edge to get under the ice, so.
What is, with the gates, what does that do to your timing as far as, how much does that add to your route time?
Sioux Falls claims it's, uh, thirty-three percent or so, our third increase in time to clean the streets. Um, we haven't had a lot of experience with it yet, uh, we have, we have good operators. And the operators we have are pretty efficient and fast, um, I don't think in our case it's quite that much of a slowdown.
And, and then that does save time coming back with a truck and a, and a loader also, correct?
Um, in most cases, we still, normally our, our standard teams are three man teams, we run a, a blade, a truck and then a loader. To clean up behind at the intersections, um, generally with the snow gate pulling all the way across the intersection. Lot of times you can't get all the snow, so you have to back up again and get it, and so what we've done, we've tried to still. We've ended up increasing our teams from three man to four man teams because of the snow gate, but we haven't done that the whole time. When the low snows, we can get by without a, a loader following, the gate's able to pull it, so. Um, the longer the stretch, the harder it is for the gate to, to pull that snow, so. Wide intersections, it slows us out, we have to back up and stuff, so.
I did notice with, go ahead, I did notice with the first snow, the eight inch snow, we had a tremendous job done downtown. We didn't have, I think the chief said they wrote two tickets, and it was the last snow, it went downtown right after you guys were done. There was a lot of cars you guys went around, which wasn't a big issue because there wasn't that much snow, but was it the fact that we didn't declare a?
I, I think that's the biggest part, it was, uh, uh, the official reading after the first day was one point six inches. Um, I think we still continue to get a little bit more snow after that, but the official reading was, uh, under the two inches, so. We did put out the PSA for, for the uptown residents to be able to move, we let them know when we were moving the snow uptown, but we still had a few cars up there.
One of the, one of the questions that I've had, uh, two calls, I think, it isn't, it isn't a, a big deal, but people are asking me, uh. They see this big sanding truck coming with a plowed on front, and the plow is up and they're not being used, explain to folks why you don't have that plow down.
Yeah, generally, uh, what the deal is, is when you run a plow truck down the road from point A to point B, if, if you drop the blade down, you have a. Twelve foot blade at an angle, which your path, you might be clearing nine, ten feet, somewhere in there. Um, what you end up with is a windrow off to the side, and if you have enough snow, you might have a three foot tall windrow. And it creates a hazard in the street worse than just having the snow from driving. Um, you would have to have, just like you would normally, another machine coming behind it to clear that over to the edge. And that's why we don't just put our plows down as we go.
Okay, anybody else got any questions?
Rob, I have a question about a snow gate out by the lake, is that ever an option, that the city would put a snow gate on the private company that? You know, I've whined about that ever since I moved out there, with the snow getting pushed onto our side of the street, so it goes four times over. And then we get huge windrows in there, I'm just wondering if, would the city ever consider putting a snow gate on? And it's really only, I think I've counted it, maybe fourteen different homes or something that are affected by that.
You know, I guess if the contractor's willing, I mean, it. You know, I guess if the contractor's willing, I mean, it, it, maybe it'd be worth the, the try. I guess, uh, my concern always comes down to the blowing snow out there is usually deeper than that six inches where it would win, winrow up.
I don't think the snow gate, personally, I don't think it would work out there, 'cause you're talking, it goes back and forth your way, keeps pushing it over four times, does it not? That'd be such a huge windrow, uh, I, I don't think there's any way you could do that.
I don't know that the gate would pull it. I think we'd damage the gate doing that. Or, the other thing is, if the snow, the other thing I've noticed with this is if the snow is light enough and you, you even have the four inches of snow and stuff, it just, it'll boil over the top. It doesn't necessarily always damage the gate, but it'll boil over the top of the mold board when you're, when you're trying to pull a lot. So, you end up backing up, you know, several times in some cases. I noticed that last year, up on the north end of town, up in here, we had a lot of blowing. And there was, we had a four-inch snow, and the snow gate was struggling up in that area just for the fact that drifted areas just couldn't pull all that snow. So, in those areas, we ended up, you know, leaving the gate up for part of that. I mean, it, it does work nice, and I've had a lot of comments. People really like it, 'cause they have a lot less slow, snow to clean up in their driveways. But, there is certain scenarios where it isn't ideal.
Thanks, Rob, thanks Shane. Any, any other questions? Well, thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. Is there anything else you guys need to talk about quickly in the work session?
Just like we got a lot of time, I'd like to just make a comment on the great job that the Optimus Club has been doing out at City Park. Guy went out there last night. Looks great, I asked Randy Rockton, I said, so what's the slowest night you guys got out there? He said, Sunday. I said, good, I'll come out Sunday. When I got in line, I was about fifty yards from Highway Twenty.
Wow.
And, I mean, it took a good hour and a half, hour forty-five minutes, by the time we got through line, got through the park, and there was still a line almost up to the highway. So, just, it's a great thing for Watertown. I'd like to thank all the Optimus Club and, and all the merchants and stuff that put their time together and put their displays out there. It's great for the community, so.
You know, one of the things, Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, six to nine.
It will be open, uh, I think just Saturday and Sunday this coming weekend, and it's done, so.
One of the things that's interesting, I don't know if you are aware, or if you, if you might have forgotten about it, but the, the hotels have rented the trolley on those nights. And they drive from hotel to hotel to hotel and take people out there for, uh, the hotel actually is just saying, you know, take these people out. And, and they're going out with full loads from hotel people that are staying in town. It's a great service, and, and it's a great thing they've done, and the heater works in it really well, and life's good. Thanks, Randy. Anything else? Hearing none, I guess I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, we'll be.